Call to order the Village of Riverside Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting and public hearing for Wednesday, August 24, 2022. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Palatier?
Here.
Commissioner Hanigan?
Here.
Commissioner Brahm?
Here.
Chairperson Mateo?
I am here.
Thank you.
We have a quorum.
So Assistant Village Manager Monroe and I are extremely pleased to introduce you all to the new village planner, Anne Siren. We're really happy that you're here.
Thank you so much. It's a real pleasure to be here. Chairman Mateo asked me to say a few words, and I just wanted to share that I'm originally from Michigan. I studied at Michigan State University and spent my planning career with the town of Hiltonet Island in South Carolina. And recently wanted to relocate to be a little bit closer to family and live in a larger area and found this opportunity, and I'm extremely happy to be here and pleased to join you today.
Great, welcome.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to approve the Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting minutes from July 27?
So moved.
Second?
I second.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Miller?
I'm sorry, are there any comments?
Oh.
Changes?
Go ahead.
Edits?
Okay. Commissioner?
I have to abstain.
Oh, you're abstaining. Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Palatier?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanigan?
Aye.
Commissioner Brahm?
Aye.
Chairperson Mateo?
Aye. Motion passes.
Okay.
We don't seem to have any visitors at the moment, so we can move on to the village staff report, village board update.
Ah, I apologize if there's anything else.
So the board heard the two variation requests?
Yes.
For Ames?
Yes, thank you. Okay, so the Ames School fence variation was approved by the village board and recommended for a variation in fence height. The second public hearing that was held last meeting regarding the Riverside Presbyterian Church, there were two different variation recommendations that this body discussed at the meeting. One was in favor of recommending a tent being placed in the side yard, or I'm sorry, in the street yard of the property temporarily. The other aspect of that was to deny their request for that tent to be placed there for more than 30 days consecutively, or 45 total days for the year. When the village board reviewed this, they also denied the request for a lengthier term of installation of the tent, and they also deferred a final action on the placement in the street yard until there was additional discussion of that matter. So that's...
Thank you.
Thank you.
And do you want to update us on the lot and lot?
Oh, yes.
Can you?
So, thank you. That's a good one. It did go through the village board, but I certainly can update you. We just issued a permit on 28 Lotton. This was a parking lot site plan that the commission had reviewed. Their plans actually were modified slightly, and it will all be permeable paper now, so there won't be a component of concrete or asphalt in that lot. So that's a positive change or upgrade to the site. So they'll be starting construction soon, and we'll see the end result later this fall, I would imagine.
Glad to hear they listened to us and took some advice.
They did, and I believe the permitting for the other site plan will have fairly similar results. I'll update you when that happens. Thank you.
Commissioner Marhol has joined us at 7:04. Welcome.
Thank you.
This is our new village planner, Anne Siren. Next up, a public hearing, PZ 22-10, a public hearing to consider rezoning the proposed area, including properties facing the west side of Harlem Avenue, beginning at the north from 3144 South Harlem, to on the north side of Addison Road to 3422 South Harlem Avenue, north of Lotton Road, from B1 Commercial Subdistrict within the B1 Business District to B1 Transit Oriented Development Subdistrict within the B1 Business District. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
I second.
Public notice was published in The Landmark on August 3 of 2022 and will become part of our exhibit. The other materials in the application will be marked as a second exhibit. Do we have a motion to accept these exhibits?
Let's take a vote.
Do you want to vote on the opening the public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's really hot in here. Can we open the door? Would that be a problem?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Call the roll when you're ready, please.
Wonderful. Okay. Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Palatier?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanigan?
Aye.
Commissioner Brahm?
Aye.
Commissioner Marhol?
Aye.
Chairperson Mateo?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Now can we have a motion to accept the exhibits?
So moved.
And I second.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's call the roll, please.
Commissioner Marhol?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Palatier?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanigan?
Aye.
Commissioner Brahm?
Aye.
Chairperson Mateo?
Aye. Motion passes. There presently is no one to swear in. If we do get yes, we can swear them in at the time.
Okay.
We're on page 11 of the PDF packet for those electronic.
Okay. So as the notice area was rather large, considering the proposed map amendment for this item, I felt that it was important to just give a very brief overview of the changes that are being proposed. Overall, this is a result of the actions taken by Planning and Zoning Commission over the last six months or so to review text amendments to the zoning code as they pertain to the Transit Oriented Development District and other various changes supporting, you know, application to our zoning in Riverside. And so what this map amendment does, it establishes a B1 Transit Oriented Development Subdistrict in the current B1 Commercial District. This is in the addresses listed by Chairperson Mateo. If you were to consult a zoning map of the village, it's on the far eastern side. It's a stretch of dark blue properties all along lining Harlem Avenue. We, as part of this project, we also clarified the other zoning district names. I will read very briefly the purpose of this district so that that is clear. We've added this into the text amendments. And I'll just preface all of this as well by saying that both the proposed map amendment, if it should be recommended by the zoning commission, and also any of the proposed text amendments will be heard by the village board, and people can provide additional public comment on those in September. That's the plan. So the definition of the B1 Transit Oriented Development District, it says that the subdistrict is intended as a transit-supportive, mixed-use area along the railroad and in close proximity to nearby bus and commuter rail facilities. The mix of uses generally support multifamily residential, retail, service, office, and other employment-generating uses. Residential uses are permitted above the ground floor only. Uses appropriately transition to surrounding single-family neighborhoods in a pedestrian and bicycle-friendly environment. So with, that was generally the approach approved or recommended by this body. With these changes, there comes some, we needed to adopt uses for appropriate uses in that area. As it remains a commercial district, many of those uses are similar to what's there And I will, you know, reference, I suppose, our use tables. It's Section 1059, Use and Bulk Requirement Tables. There's Table 4 changes. And we're citing the, a couple of things of note would be dwellings at the ground floor would be generally established as a special use, so they'd have to go through an approval process. Multifamily and townhouse kind of developments would be a permitted use. We have in the commercial relevance, it would be, let's see, of note might be brew pubs, craft distilleries, and financial institutions with and without drive-throughs are permitted uses, while things like a currency exchange, a daycare center would be a special use. Other things that would be in the B1 TOD district include a special use of a hotel motel. That's also applied as a special use in the standard B1C district, so kind of capping both the north and the south part of the east side of town. Also of note, microbreweries, which would be permitted uses in the other B1 subdistricts, is also permitted in the TOD. A motor vehicle service station or gas station is currently a special use in the B1C district. There are some that exist now in that, and they would also be considered a special use going forward. We have offices, some clarifications about their uses in these districts. They happen to be either single-story or multi-story as a special use in the TOD district, and above ground floor as a permitted use. We have other things that we would highlight, including a restaurant with drive-through facilities as a special use. That's the same special use in the standard B1C district where this has been labeled. Outdoor dining at a restaurant would be a permitted use. Without a drive-through, it would be a permitted use. And then retail sales with a drive-through would be a special use, so similar to, again, the B1 current zoning. Let's see, without a drive-through facility, it mirrors all the B1C, B1 districts as a permitted use, so retail can still happen on the district. And a vacation rental is added as a TOD use, but it remains a special use, just as all the other business districts in B1 have. Government and education kind of category. We have government offices would be a special use. School as a professional vocational, a special use. And a specialized instructional school is a permitted use. There are also just general utilities, local or regional, as special uses. It's currently a special use in the commercial B1 district. And then I will wrap up by general recreation, cultural, and entertainment. We have permitted uses matching art galleries, art studios, arts instruction in all of our business B1 districts. Banqueta or conference facilities would be a special use, likely with the room. Cultural facilities, a permitted use. Other places of assembly, recreation, indoor and outdoor, as special uses. We have a miscellaneous category as well. Currently in B1C, it allows an animal shelter as a special use. In the TOD, there is no such use permitted. We have antennas would be allowed as a special use, but the wireless telecommunications-type towers are not a use in the TOD district. Solar energy systems are also cited as a special use. And that concludes our kind of use tables. So if anyone has questions about, you know, residents have questions about what types of changes there might be in this district, there are very few in relation to what had been permitted through the existing zoning of B1C, right? Things still are marked as we've included them in the TOD district, but they remain like a special use, which would require an appearance at the Planning and Zoning Commission for a recommendation. Only other things to cover as far as changes in the code, there are some parking changes. There are some district bulk requirements, so we've added the TOD B1 bulk. A minimum building height is established in each of the B1 districts as a minimum of 21, 24 feet, as measured in accordance with the definition of building height and from grade. The maximum building height would be a height of maximum 60 feet, but no more than five stories. It maintains front yard setbacks the same as they have been, of five feet maximum. A corner side yard would have no requirement. And then there are interior side yards that match the existing zoning of B1C. And then, let's see if there's anything else at all. You know, it generally, all of the changes that have been made by the commission related to the district changes are, again, going back to the use of pedestrian access, transit stop access, and, you know, bicycle use and parking. Those are predominantly the changes that you'd see in this type of district, so. Any other comments or questions? We have, we will provide also the exhibits I prepared for you as far as a visual of the district. We'll provide those and put them on our website as well for people to take a look at what is currently there, approximately what's currently there in this stretch, and if there's any other, you know, comments or questions.
So I'll note that we've been discussing these proposed changes since January. This isn't the first time that it's come before PZC. Have you received any comments since publishing the memo?
The only comment I received was from a call from a Berwind business owner this afternoon asking about the changes. Their very brief comments only centered around, related to the code changes, is the availability of parking on a stretch of Harlem and the concern that if we are reducing the minimum amount of parking or experiencing development that would, again, remove some of the onsite parking, then we would continue, you know, on both the Riverside and the Berwind side, experience some parking congestion and availability concerns. So that was, that was their comment, and otherwise was, you know, not in opposition generally, but had comments that they wanted to express about that. So I have not heard from anyone else about this, so, including the property owners subject to the overlay.
Questions, comments? I might have heard wrong. Did you say a financial institution with drive-through will be permitted?
I saw it after the fact. You are correcting me. Yes, a financial institution with a drive-through would be considered a special use. So, and it's listed as such in the encroachments exceptions, and so it kind of lists that as another special use. So without a drive-through is a permitted use, with a drive-through as a special use.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we still have no one in the audience. Any thoughts? I mean, if this is approved by the board, it really could offer new opportunities for redevelopment. Okay, well, if there's nothing else, is there a motion to close or continue the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
I second.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Marhol?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Palatier?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanigan?
Aye.
Commissioner Brahm?
Aye.
Chairperson Mateo?
Aye.
Motion carries. Any discussion? Would somebody like to make a motion?
A motion to approve, and then we go through the standards, or?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Are you doing so?
I make a motion that we recommend the map amendment is set before us.
Second?
Second.
Okay. So I don't think we've done a zoning amendment before. The standards are on page 13 of the PDF. So this is like a special use? We don't need to meet each and every one of them, correct?
It's like a text amendment. Yes, so you do not need to meet every one.
It's not special use. At least it's getting cooler in here. A, the existing use and zoning of nearby property. Do we feel that this proposed amendment is harmonious with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
B, the extent to which property values of the subject property are diminished by the existing zoning.
I think without having any evidence before us, as far as we know, our intent is that it will be enhanced, not diminished.
Increased opportunity. C, the extent to which the proposed amendment promotes the public health, safety, comfort, convenience, and general welfare of the village?
Yes, we believe that this will do a little bit to enhance some pedestrian and bike opportunities and generally less vehicle use.
D, the relative gain to the public as compared to the hardship imposed upon the applicant?
Yes, there are actually some new development opportunities being presented with this amendment and the bulk requirements being increased.
E, the suitability of the property for purposes for which it is presently zoned, i.e. the feasibility of developing the property in question for one or more of the uses permitted under the existing zoning classification. That was a mouthful.
Yes, I think it is suitable area.
F, the length of time that property in question has been vacant as presently zoned, considered in the context of development in the area where the property is located.
This really does not apply.
Not, I agree with that. G, the evidence or lack of evidence of community need for the use proposed by the applicant.
I'm going to say agnostic based on the lack of comments.
H, the consistency of the proposed amendment with village plans?
This is part of the village plans, so.
I, that the proposed amendment will benefit the residents of the village as a whole and not just the applicant, property owners, neighbors of any property under consideration, or other special interest groups, in the extent to which the proposed use would be in the public interest and would not serve solely the interests of the applicant.
Yes, that seems a little bit repetitive of some of the other standards. Yes, our intent is that it will improve the lifestyle and livelihood of the citizens of the village.
J, the extent to which the proposed amendment creates nonconformities?
It doesn't, I don't think.
Gas station can't be.
Gas station.
But that will be legal nonconforming.
Mm-hmm.
Satisfied with that?
And it's possible with the ground floor dwelling units that will be encompassed, but I just don't think the number of nonconformities is going to be significant, that it should alter our judgment on this matter.
K, the trend of development, if any, in the general area of the property in question?
I don't think we really have a lot of evidence. I don't certainly understand that.
We are hoping that it will increase the trend of development.
Continuing on from Sherwin Williams. Finally, L, whether adequate public facilities are available, including but not limited to schools, parks, police and fire protection, roads, sanitary sewers, storm sewers, and water lines, or are reasonably capable of being provided prior to the development of the uses, which would be permitted on the subject property if the amendment were adopted.
They are available.
I think, yes, all those amenities are available, or they can easily be provided, especially given the relatively limited scope of this rezoning, the area rezoning, the nature of the properties, the size of the lots, all of that.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Marhol?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Palatier?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanigan?
Aye.
Commissioner Brahm?
Aye.
Chairperson Mateo?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, everyone, on that. Okay, next up is a review of the 2023 meeting calendar. It's on page 25. So November and December, the proposed November date is the day before Thanksgiving, and the proposed December date is two days after Christmas. Would we like to move them further away from the holidays?
Yes.
As we typically have in the past? Okay. We can talk about what's been done in the past, and you can look at the calendars of other commissions and whatnot, and maybe next month we can propose some dates.
Yeah, that would be fine. We can, we can propose the dates and, exactly, look at the history. If you want to meet before or after. I think, there have been times, I believe we met on a Monday night once.
Like the third Monday.
So, yeah. So if that's preferable, we'll check the calendar for any other commission meetings that have been shifted around. I know there are several commissions talking about this at the exact same time, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other conflicts? Okay. Next up is Old Business, page 26, discussion of Transit Oriented Developing Zoning Code updates related to the sign code.
So, so I'll just preface this with, we have seen this a couple of times. There have been very few changes that have been made in the last couple of months. We added it to the packet for the July meeting with the expectation we might get to it. The village board would, you know, while they don't require a formal recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission for changes to sections of the code outside of the zoning chapter, but it would be exceptionally helpful to hear any comments or feedback related to the sign code and the adopted changes or proposed changes.
So we don't want to vote?
But, what would you say? Do you want, do you want a motion to?
You can. I mean, it's indicated as discussion, but I think, you know, you're just, because it's not a formal public hearing or anything, if you want to create a consensus and take a vote, I'm okay with that.
Okay. Comments on the sign code?
I had comments on two items. I don't know if we weren't planning on going through them. I can just bring them up. Is that good?
Yes, please.
Okay. One of them was on this issue of grade. There was a change to the definition of grade, natural grade. But then, so it says the pre, I don't know if someone has it in front of them, but I, okay, I could read it. Okay. So now it says grade natural. The pre-construction elevation at the level of the street closest to the sign, to which the sign is oriented, measured at the street's center line. Notwithstanding the foregoing, if the sign is located not less than 75 feet from the right-of-way, grade shall mean the average ground elevation of the lot on which the sign is located. But then, when you look at 4- let's see, 4-3-7, sign area height computations, subparagraph 8-2, it says sign height. Sign height shall be measured as the vertical distance from the average natural grade at the foot of the sign to the highest point. So I don't see that the new definition has any application unless I missed something, and seems to be inconsistent with the specific provision on sign height. I like the provision on sign height. It seems very, it seems cleaner than the definition. This is my first comment.
Can you state where those two provisions are again?
Yes, it was in the definitions for natural grade or grade, comma, natural.
Okay.
And then 4-3-7, 8-2, sign height.
It's on page 14 of that.
Yeah, it's at the bottom of the memo.
Memo.
I think in general, we have an issue with grade. The definition of grade in our bigger, in our zoning code also, but this-
So looking at the consultant's comment on the definition of natural grade, he wrote, "The definition clarifies how to determine the natural grade, which is used to establish the allowable height of a sign." That doesn't help us.
I have, I have a suspicion that someone developed this definition and then someone else wrote that part about sign height, and it wasn't the same person.
Is the proposed way of measuring the height of a sign, because I haven't caught up to there yet, is that new or is it old language? There it is.
It is, yeah, you see it, the red line and the strikeout.
There are a set of drawings on page fifteen of the memo, which are probably the most helpful aspect of this, because they give you a picture, and then some clarifying commentary.
Yeah, that's my, that was my other point. I forgot about that. It's like, are all of these pictures and their commentary incorporated? Automatically, I assume, but then why wouldn't the text reference them? They're just there all of a sudden.
That's one of the things that I sent to Ms. Monroe to make sure all the figures have titles or captions.
I mean, the, the pictures have a lot more information than the small amount of text.
So at sign height, the consultant wrote, "Need to clarify standards that tie sign height to the original grade of the property, not post-construction grade that may include berm's or other changes that raise the grade of the property."
And the drawings do that.
Yeah.
They do indicate a berm that was built later does not come into defining the sign height.
I would agree that the drawings are clearer in explaining the intent, and perhaps the definition should be modified to incorporate the text within the drawings.
The definition of natural grade?
Yes.
Right, or say something like, "Sign height shall be determined as shown in the four diagrams, the pictures attached," or something like that.
Yeah, those are good suggestions. I, I agree that, you know, from a user's perspective, the images with the con- the commentary that follows it are, are more useful than the definition as proposed currently.
And then strike the definition, I think. It's just confusing.
Any, any thoughts about future regular user of this?
No, no, I, the diagrams are very helpful.
Okay.
Yeah, agreed.
Did, wait, so you suggested striking all the definition for natural grade and just say, "See if you're-"
Yes, because I think that definition is only in the sign code. I mean, maybe I'm wrong. I didn't see anywhere else where that was used in the rest of the sign code. Natural, reference to natural grade.
What do the rest of you think about getting rid of the current proposed definition and just refer to figures? Is that just moving the issue?
No, it's not moving the issue. I think Commissioner Miller is correct, and as well as Commissioner Henigan. The drawings, if we, in the def- in the text of the definition, we refer back, refer to the drawings and say, "This is how natural grade is defined."
My staff could do a word search or something to make sure grade is not referenced anywhere else, but.
Yeah, I'd agree. If this is the only place that it is referenced, then I don't see a need for a separate definition. The explanation is more helpful.
Agreed. Okay.
Is the part of the definition that talks about less than seventy-five feet captured in the
I don't think I'm ready to, I, I would have to think about this some more. I don't think I'm ready to necessarily get rid of the definition of, I, I think natural grade has to be defined somewhere. Not but for that seventy-five feet. I don't know if we can just rely on diagrams.
You can rely on, the diagrams aren't the issue. I think to support what you're saying is the pre- natural grade is simply the pre-construction average ground elevation of the lot on which the sign is located. That's enough. That's, the pre-construction average grade is very easy to figure out with a survey. Take all the elevations, average them out, that's it. If you need help in figuring that out, then we've got the drawings as well.
So then you're suggesting that we get rid of the language, starting from notwithstanding the foregoing and to the end?
I think, actually, you get rid of, you actually start the definition, oh, sorry, I'm talking too quickly. Grade natural, and then, "Natural grade shall mean the average ground elevation of the lot on which the sign is located." So actually, we're keeping the last part of the definition.
Which is then repeated at four, three, seven.
Well, seventy-five feet's not mentioned in the-
I don't know why we have the seventy-five feet, other than it was trying to, I think originally we were trying to tie it to the street.
I think, as I recall, when the consultant was on the video, we were discussing this in context of the building heights, perhaps. And then it was put into the sign code also.
I think the seventy-five-foot distance would be much more applicable to a large shopping center or properties that I can't really see anything in this district, or really in Riverside where it would have an impact.
I agree with that, yeah. I don't know if it'll ever come up for a sign seventy-five feet away from- Right of way.
I would agree.
Churches, but.
Yeah, that's, that's about it. Everything else is either, you know, pretty closely set to a sidewalk or a, if they do have a, a parking lot, the general, you know, right-of-way area might even be just half of that distance or less, so.
You need to be seventy-five feet away and there to be a significant grade difference for this to come into play, which is kind of a lot.
So we're modifying the-
In the text of the captions, would it be good for clarity if you added after post-construction final grade of the lot on which the sign is located? So it would say, "If the pre-construction natural grade or post-construction final grade of the lot on which the sign is located."
Sure.
Yes.
So what about that first sentence, then, in how you measure sign height? Was that fine to keep?
I think you have to eliminate the words "at the foot of the sign." Because average natural, in this case, average natural grade has nothing to do with the sign itself. It has to do with the lot.
Doesn't it have to do with where the sign is located? And not the lot in particular? I mean, what if, what if the sign is, you know, near the front of the building? And then further back in the lot, the average, the natural grade is changed and all the rest. We don't really care about that, do we?
The average natural g- grade is the average across the entire lot. So, yes, by mathematical, if the back of the lot is higher, it will raise the defined elevation point.
But the, it seems to me like the, the idea is how the sign relates to people passing by. And so therefore, one of the pictures is the pre-construction natural grade is higher than the elevation of the adjacent road's center line. The height of the sign should be measured from the pre-construction natural grade. So I guess, do we care about the whole, the average natural grade of the whole lot or only where the sign is? We're just talking about a sign. We're not talking about a building height, for instance, which would make a bigger difference. And these-
The other thing is, is that for all of our commercial properties and business districts, there, I cannot imagine any place along Harlem, Ogden, Burlington, or Quincy where there is a significant difference in the average grade of the lot. There's no hills in the backyards, is what I'm saying.
So that first illustration is really not relevant to Riverside. Do we agree on that?
What if, what if we got rid of, I mean, assuming, assuming that we're just talking about the natural grade on, at, in the area of the lot where the sign faces? What about getting rid of the word "average"? So it would just be the natural grade at the foot of the sign? Because if you get rid of the language "at the foot of the sign," then that would lead one to believe that it's the average natural grade of the lot. And while we don't have any lots currently that are on a slope or have different, vastly different averages, natural grade averages, maybe we will.
You can't, because it's pre-construction. So even if you build a berm, that's post-construction. That does not figure into the calculations.
But we're still not, I mean, what's, what's the point, though? I mean, the, the, is the purpose with the sign height to look at the area of the lot where the sign faces, or is it to take into account the entire lot?
For me, it would be just where the sign is.
Me too.
In relation to pass or vice. But you're right, in some ways, it's like when we talk about average natural grade at the foot of the sign, what does that mean within the, you know, one square foot area around the sign? It's not really defined. I mean, that would seem to me what it means, but you're not gonna have a lot of difference unless it's like on a, literally on a slope.
And that's why it's easier just to use the natural grade over the entire lot.
I think that's harder, because then you have to have this assessment of what's the, and just to put up a sign, you know, you've got to do a survey of an entire lot. This is not necessarily for new construction. It could just be someone who wants to put up a sign.
So the definition of grade in the zoning code, while it's referring to a building, could be replaced by, you know, the area of the sign. And it just says, "Grade is the average level of the finished surface of the ground adjacent to the exterior walls of the building." So if you were to replace that as grade for a sign, as the average level of the finished surface of the ground adjacent to the sign, I mean, that's very, it, it's duplicative language that has some basis in what we already use, that's meeting some of these objectives as far as, you know, where, where the sign is located, if you want to go that route.
I don't know, I don't understand what "finished" means, though. What does that mean? That sounds like it's post-construction. It's not pre-construction. Like someone could build up their sign, right? They could put a little plinth there and, you know, build a little berm and then say, "This is the finished," and I don't think we want that.
Okay.
I would be okay with just the natural grade at the sign post.
I think that's fine.
Because there is no average at the sign post.
At the base of the sign. I hate to confuse things even further, but I am going to anyway. There, the first two diagrams show the difference between whether the sign is higher or lower than the center line of the road. Since we're not talking about the center line of the road anymore, I don't think we need either of those two diagrams, because we're just talking about the base of the sign to the top of the sign. It doesn't matter where it is in relation to the roadway. So I think those, if we're changing the definition like we've been talking about, I think those two should go, because they'll just end up confusing things more.
Other thoughts?
I, I can agree with Commissioner Henigan's thoughts. The, the second two, the bottom two diagrams are sufficient.
Yeah, I think so.
We're okay with that?
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
And should the sign height provision right before that, should that reference the diagrams then? Add a cross-reference there? Yes.
Yeah.
Then don't, those, doesn't the text, does the text in the diagrams need to not reference, reference any kind of post or pre-construction? Maybe just have the definition that we sort of agreed on, the definitional part, and have a new diagram that just shows a sign.
No, it has to be pre-construction. That's the whole point of the third diagram from the top, is that you cannot build a berm and then stick a sign on top of this burn, berm and gain height out of it.
That's true. You could keep that one, certainly, yeah.
That's, that's why we are-
I just, the, the concept of pre-construction makes me think of, you're not constructing a sign. You don't construct a sign. You just install a sign. So pre-construction seems like an inaccurate-
Not really.
It sounds, I imagine the whole development, you know, whole building being developed. You know, when the grade of the entire lot being raised or lowered. Like if the pre-installation natural grade is higher than the elevation. Anyway, it looks like the third diagram is, is definitely a good diagram to keep. And then the fourth one is just referencing how you measure to the height of the sign itself. How you measure the sign from its base to its top. So I think the last, as, you know, the other commissioners said, the third and the fourth diagram should be retained and the first two taken out.
Are we good with that? Since we're not focusing on the streets?
And you're keeping the phrase "at the foot of the sign"?
Mm-hmm.
And then in the third diagram, we add that same language, "Any post-construction changes in grade that result in the final grade at the foot of the sign being higher than the pre-construction grade," etc. Yes, that, that's essential to the diagram.
Okay.
You had another?
I had one small thing. I don't know if this was a mistake, but at four dash three dash five, there's a little red line of, I think, like three words. It says box signs or something like that. And I don't know if that was supposed to be numbered.
Oh, I see, I see. We'll ver- we'll verify what that, that is. I would imagine if it's underlined, the intent is to do, include it. And I believe that that, you know, is a general desire. We've been talking about removing the box and cabinet signs, so we'll, that will be numbered.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you for finding that.
Then my last comment was on this reference to the Metro Electronic Reader Board signs, and it's in four dash three dash fifteen. In both subparagraph A1 and in B2, there's a reference to, "One exception is the Metro Electronic Reader Board signs." You say, "All these things are exempt or not exempt, but one exception is," and I just- And I just, that term "one exception is" just struck me as odd. Is that suggesting that there are other exceptions somewhere that aren't really discussed here, but they're, they're there somewhere? I just think it should maybe say, be worded slightly differently, like...
Like the only exception.
This doesn't apply to Metro Electronic Reader Board signs, or accepted from this paragraph are Metro Electronic Reader Board signs, or something like that.
I would agree with that.
So it's in A1 and B2.
And what's the...
And B2 is referencing that they can only operate between 6:00 AM and 10:00 PM each day. One exception is Metro Electronic Reader Board signs.
I see. Yeah. So a rephrasing of that.
Yes.
Term, okay. Those terms.
Those are all the comments I had.
Great ones. Any others?
So I had a couple of things to highlight. I'm not sure I'm going to be able to find them now. Page 46 of the agenda packet. We are in 4311. Number five, discontinuance of use of nonconforming sign. This is a question for staff. Are you happy with those recommended time periods? Thirty days, six months? Because it would be staff who's dealing with it.
Yeah, I mean, it, wherever I've been, the struggle to remove old signage is either unused signs by business vacancies or other changes. For nonconforming signage is challenging to address. We, having a timeframe in which to address it is helpful as a guide, so that we can address, you know, the issue and contact someone and say, "Hey, you know, we recognize that there's been a change at this location. You're going to need to remove or change your sign, become conforming, or, you know, remove the old face of the sign," or whatever the case is. So having something to support that is, is good. The timeframe in which to, to approve, you know, granting extension, again, is reasonable if someone is contacting a sign contractor or something like that in that period of time in order to make a change, or, you know, or contractor to remove that, cap it, paint it, whatever it is.
But to me, it seems like the first main paragraph says, well, maybe I'm interpreting it incorrectly. So do you read it, the first paragraph, as after thirty days, something needs to be done? And then B says, "This needs to be done in six months." Those two are not in conflict? I see. As you read it?
I think they are.
Yeah, I mean, so the way that I would read it, if you're reading from top to bottom, it's saying, "Okay, we know there's been a change, and this has been observed for at least thirty days." Then, at that point in time, depending on what, what the issue is, they could either be granted an additional thirty days extension to make that change. And then if they're, well, yeah, I mean, as far as removal, there's a... Discontinuing to do a business closing, or a period of six months. Maybe the intent was that we would be issuing additional thirty-day extensions for a period of six months? I mean, but then, why?
Well, A limits the extensions to one.
Right. And so then it's saying, "Nonconform," okay, so... So the "nonconforming" signs would be...
So let's say, a business in B2 closes, they have a box sign. From your perspective, when does that sign, box sign, need to be removed?
Well...
And I'm reading different things here.
Yeah. Well, I, I get that point. If you were to, so I guess the, the distinction for me would need to say, okay, if the, well, I guess it's all related to nonconforming signs, in which case we would want them to conform, and giving them that period of time. I think that, you know, maybe finding a, a period of time in between that? I mean, six months is a long time for a business to be vacant, but at the same time, thirty days is a very quick turnaround, when you're not sure what is going to go in there. So if we were to make a change to it, I'd probably recommend removing either A or, you know, maybe removing something, some aspect of it, or reducing the amount from six months.
Any thoughts?
We had a discretion with the town for how we enforced. We didn't give ourselves a limited period. We said it's been abandoned, and that determination was made by staff attorney.
Okay.
Giving yourself some discretion makes a little bit of sense, so you're not tied to something, if you, you know, feel that that's appropriate.
Well, I think having something explicit would help staff deal with building owners to make these changes in whatever timely fashion. And so we can point to code and say, "Look, this is..."
Do you make any, and I, I apologize for not being more familiar with the proposed amendments, but do you make any distinction for, for lease signs? For example, reusing a pole sign? You know, if they want to lease out that sign, or putting a for-lease sign over the existing sign? Is there any exemption in the, in the code for that, where you might want to allow an existing pole sign to remain, or it would be considered in use if it has a for-lease sign on it?
That's a great question. I guess it would still be in use if it had "for sale" on it, which would be a temporary sign.
Okay.
Right. Right.
I'm wondering if we should just get rid of B? Because it's pretty much already stated in the first paragraph.
I think if the goal is to bring signs into conformance, then yes, that's what we should do.
But there's still an exception then, so under five...
Right.
Before the change of adding for a continuous period of thirty days, if your business identity changed, you had to change your sign. But now, so long as it's kind of changing within a thirty-day period, you don't have to. So that sign could conceivably continue indefinitely, right?
Right.
Is that the intent? Or do you want to say if the business identity changes, or the use changes, they have to come into conformance, but they have ninety days to do it, or something like that?
I mean, I would, I would prefer what you had just stated in terms of, you know, it changes over, either in use, new business identity, whatever it is, they, they get a benefit. Hopefully, they look at it as a benefit of a new sign that also conforms to the code. You give them time that's in excess of thirty days, but not as many as six months, to make an effort to come into conformance. If they run into some issues, you still have this thirty-day extension available to, to grant additional time to come into conformance. We have, we have similar types of restrictions for, kind of guidance for permits that have expired, so, you know, if we are aware of inactivity for, over a certain period of time, then we can choose to, to determine that there's no further work being done on that, on that building permit. You know, and we, we do some discretion as far as that goes, but certainly if someone's ripped up most of their house and has done nothing, then we can require a new permit, and we could also address, you know, sign changeover in a sort of similar way.
So are you thinking to allow, be expect, to set the expectation of a thirty-day cha, removal of a sign for a business that's no longer in place? With the, perhaps allowing the administrator to, maybe not just one thirty-day extension, but may grant thirty-day extensions if given evidence that the applicant is in the process of working with a contractor to have a new sign installed, but no more than six months?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Yeah. What do you guys think?
I like that.
Yeah.
And that's a very practical and probably realistic way of, of looking at it, depending on fabrication, timeframes, and all of that for, for design, or whatever it is that they're using, so.
Yeah. Okay. Depending on the type of sign, you might want to consider, and this may be too much, but you might want to consider language specifying, like if you have box signs, or depending on the structure of the sign, if it's something that's clearly going to be reused by a different business, which is typically the case, putting in some sort of false front or something like that, if you can't get past, you don't have to remove the entire box structure if you put something in there that's aesthetically similar to the building, while you wait to put in the new.
We want to remove the box signs.
Oh, we are trying to get rid of box signs? Okay. Sorry, I wasn't up to speed on that.
No, no. It's, but, you know, if somebody has a, if someone has a wall sign, or, you know, they have some kind of blade sign that they're affixing to then keep putting something on that face, you know, we certainly would advocate for covering that. Yeah, for sure.
So we're good on that?
Well, so based on what you said, the, the main body of five, can somebody still, if they go right from one business use or identity to the other, keep the sign? Or is the idea, if you change your business use or identity, you have thirty days to get a new sign?
Number six says that you can't change anything in the sign. If it's nonconforming. You can't change any copy, right? So does that address your concern?
We would, the, I think the intent to apply is that if the business changes, then, and is nonconforming existing, then we would, we would have them change that sign. They'd need to remove it, or take some action within that thirty days, which could potentially be extended up to, you know, six months for, before installed.
So, so the phrase for a continuous period of thirty days needs to be...
Grant A.
Stricken and changed to kind of capture what you just said.
Okay. So, right, so we would just remove that from number five. We would eliminate that new insertion for a continuous period of thirty days. We would keep that. And then we would add this point A, about a thirty-day extension, which would also say the zoning administrator may grant A thirty-day extension, you know, or one, one or more thirty-day extensions, and as it would read. And then B would, would stay, but be clarified that this action needs to be completed within six months. Generally speaking, that would be what it says.
We good with that? Okay.
Page fifty-two of the agenda packet, table one, B2, zoning district sign standards. So if I remember right, the consultant advised against having pole signs in the B1, because it wasn't transit-friendly or pedestrian-friendly. Do we want to allow these types of signs in B2? Jeff Soto is one example of a sign in B2 that's been there forever. So if his business were to sell, does the pole sign need to come down?
I think Salon de Moore got a variation for theirs years ago.
I remember that, yeah. I mean, it might not be an issue. I just wanted to bring that up. I mean, they could replace it with a monument sign, right? Is that a sure... It's a big issue. One more thing, page sixty-one. So we're looking at the table two, the B1 sign standards. So we had the B1C, and then B1TC, and now we're adding on B1TOD. They don't all match, and I wonder if we want them to match. So for example, is everybody there? If we look at the B1C, the wall sign maximum height has been changed to cornice line, excuse me, or second-floor window line, whichever is lower. If you scroll down to B1TC, it's still top of the building. If you look at TOD, top of the building. So do we want all of these things to match? Or is there a reason to do B1C and not the other two?
If we're looking at the pedestrian-friendly, transit-oriented development district, I would think we would want it to mimic the cornice line, second-floor window language.
I can't think of a reason why they would be not.
Okay, and then in this table, if you look at the last row for each section, monument sign or pole sign, so for, originally it was thirty-two feet, then if you look at the same thing for TC, it's twenty-four feet. If you look at the proposed one for TOD, it's also twenty-four square feet. So again, do we want them to match? Or is there a reason to have a much larger sign in what will remain as B1C compared with the rest? Well, I think there is a, a reason, except maybe that same reason would apply to the B1TOD, because you're on a busy street, and B1C, you know, people are zooming by at thirty-five or whatever, and there's a lot of activity, and so maybe a business would rather have a slightly larger sign, so people notice it. Well, they're actually propose, as it's currently written, proposing a smaller maximum area in TOD, for the TOD, I noticed that.
Right.
That's why I'm saying that.
So I think she's saying it should be maybe the thirty-two.
So maybe it should be the same as the B1C for that, and the B2 could have smaller signs.
I think twenty-four actually seems a little small for a pole sign or a monument sign.
So, keep thirty-two for B1C, change TOD to thirty-two, but keep the smaller twenty-four foot, which is currently in our code for the TC. What do you think about that? That sounds fine to me.
I like that.
Okay. Ms. Monroe, has anyone, I know you haven't been here that long, has anyone, any business owners ever complained that they would like to have a larger sign than what's allowed under the code?
I have not received that concern. The only questions have been, you know, related to, "How many wall signs can I have? Is there a digital component that I can include?" Those are the questions I've received. And, and so we've had very few sign permits, a couple of sign replacements. People have pretty much taken that as, as face, face value. You know, in the couple that we've approved, I think the Loyola building on Harlem or Ogden replaced their signs, I think, at gas station. They were, they were all about twenty-two square feet or so. So it's in that range, so it's not out of the question, but we're giving the option to have a slightly larger monument sign. monument sign, especially if you incorporate more than one tenant in that sign or something like that, then you would capture more options in, in those certain zoning districts if that's what you like.
And then my last comment is page 66 of the agenda packet, Figure 8, window signs. Can we just ask one of the consultants to see if they can update it?
Yes.
They were successful with the other ones.
Okay.
And that's all I have. So do we have consensus to recommend the sign code changes to the board?
Yes.
There we go. We have consensus.
All right. Thank you.
And again, so this is it for us, right? As far as we know?
So far. Yes, we will, we'll see if there's any questions, right? It'll be presented, kind of en masse to the Village Board if, if there's...
Commissioner Miller, please.
If there's any questions at all, or, or concern questions for the Planning and Zoning Commission, there may, hopefully there won't be a return to, of any of this to you, but should there be any questions, you'll, you'll know about that in the next month or so.
So thank you, everyone. This was a heavy lift. We didn't think we'd take this long, but it's your attention to detail that really, you know, made this as great as it could be. And AVM Monroe, what you did, stepping in and taking over and leading this, has been remarkable, so thank you.
Thank you for your patience listening to me talk. Thank you.
Our next meeting is September 28. Please have it on your calendar. And that's all we have, is your motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
I second.
Commissioner Brom gets that one. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Marhol.
Aye.
Commissioner Miller.
Aye.
Commissioner Pelletier.
Aye.
Commissioner Henigan.
Aye.
Commissioner Brom.
Aye.
Tierpris and Mateo.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful rest of your summer and evening, and we'll see you in September.